I'd like to call the order, call to order the meeting of the Kansas City Kansas Community College Board of Trustees April 14, 2015, meeting to order and ask for a roll call. I'm sorry, pledge allegiance. Doug, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll have the roll call.
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Trustee Bryden Bowe, trustee Daniels.
Here.
Trustee Flunder, trustee Maddox.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Townsend.
Here.
All right, next we're going to have the swearing in of our newly elected trustees, Don Ash, Clyde Townsend, and Ray Daniels. And performing the ceremony is our general counsel, Mr. Darryl Winn.
You can do it by the microphone, so they can hear you.
Trustees, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully and honestly perform the duties of your office as a member of the Kansas City Kansas Community College Board of Trustees, Wyandotte County, Kansas? So help you God.
I do.
Therefore, based upon the authority vested in me, you here now have taken the oath of office as a community college trustee. I'm going to ask you now to sign and date the oath of office that I have here before me, and welcome, gentlemen, back to where you are.
They're moved.
Second.
They're moved to second to approve the amended agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Need a motion to approve the March 10, 2015, meeting minutes.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the March 10, 2015 minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Audience to patrons and petitioners, anyone wishing to speak to the board, please give your name and your address, and we're going to hold you to five minutes, and your time starts now.
Okay, my name is Richard Mavion. My address is 2835 Oakland, KCK 66106. Hello, Board Trustees, it's very good to see you again. Most of you know me very well. I think this, the last time I was here, the only people that wasn't here is your president and I think the new CFO officer. Everyone else was pretty much here. I'm going to hand these sheets out, I'll send them down. Trustee Ash, you as told me, he's monitoring about five minutes, so I got to talk fast. Before, when I was here, you were very responsible for me being able to do the break in the silence conference. And as I told you, the last time I was here, I thought we did a wonderful job, and we were able to actually make the environmental movement a issue in Kansas City, Kansas. Well, since that time, folks, as you can see by the shirt that I'm wearing, January I was elected president of the NAACP. And so now I'm coming back to you again because I have another situation that I want to talk to you about, and this is more an event than it is a conference. It has to do with our Freedom Fund banquet that's going to be coming up in August the 14th of this year, August the 15th, actually. And that sheet I'm handing you out is the person that I would like to be able to contract with to be our keynote speaker. That is, we had her here for the environmental movement, so she's familiar with Kansas City, but she's come in here, that is Booker T. Washington's great-granddaughter. And she just got her second book out, and I think that the book that she has written is one that if you haven't had a chance, now that you see the title of it on there, I would recommend that you read it. It was written for our young people. It wasn't written for you and I, you probably go, oh, this is not my level of writing. But if you read this book, you will understand why the things we are encountering this day and age with our young people, it was written for her. So when I asked God how I was supposed to talk to you all, so y'all in trouble, he, I picked up this book to read it, and I ran into a section that said, "My great-grandmother, Jane, was born a slave. She was stripped of her surname, her parents, and her freedom. She was raped, she didn't know her date of birth, she was robbed of her right to a formal education, she was illiterate. Yes, she was a rock. A rock whose love for her children never waver. Thus she gave birth to the most influential and powerful black leader of this time, my great-grandfather Booker T. Washington. To me, and probably to my great-grandfather Booker T. Washington, his mother and my great-grandmother Jane would always remain the noblest embodiment of womanhood." That, as far as I'm concerned, is a reason for us to have her here. Yesterday, I was in St. Louis at a funeral and ran into a young lady who very much needs to talk to this woman. And when you read the book and see how she pulled herself up from living in poverty, living in public housing, and living around drugs and violence in Oakland, California, to become the person that she is now, and regaining her legacy as far as her family is concerned, you also will agree, we need this woman here. So the reason I'm talking to you, I need you to help me, I would like for you to help me, if you could, in bringing her. She's gone, before, when we had the conference, you all graciously covered me with $5,000. For her coming in, I'm only going to need like $3,500. What she's going to be able to do, and what I wanted to be able to do, is to put on a weekend extravaganza. She'll have, we'll have the Freedom Fund fund on a Saturday night. Friday night, I want to be able to have a meet and greet and a book signing, and work with our colleges and universities and groups from all over the metropolitan area, to have them come in and meet and greet this woman. We may charge the college students $10 to get in, we'll charge high school students $5, and I want to hold this at the former YWCA on 16th and State, that's just now in the process of being reopened. The reason, I want my public housing moms and children to be able to walk there. I want them to be able to come meet this woman, and I need your help in being able to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Kelly Newton, I'm the head men's basketball coach here. I wanted to step up and present, we just got these flyers done on Monday, I wanted to present a fundraiser that we're doing for the men's basketball team that will help the community as well. It's, every kid matters. On Saturday, April the 25th, we're going to have a bunch of people from our community metropolitan area, there will be some spoken word, there will be some discussion about cyberbullying, teen violence, peer pressure, racism, education, job trade, just kind of covering every avenue for our youth in our community. We have already reached out to a lot of high schools in Wyandotte County over in Missouri. We have some people going down to Lawrence and surrounding cities as well. And I have some flyers here that I will pass out to the board. Like I said, this is a fundraiser for our men's basketball program. The next day, on the 26th, we're having an All-Star game. We're going to do this, this is the first annual, we want to do this every single year to bring awareness to our college, to our men's basketball program, to help, you know, our youth in our community and things of that nature. So just wanted to make that, make the board aware, make the community aware of this great event that is going to be going on. Later on, well, next week, I will have our complete list of people who's going to speak, who's going to perform, things of that nature, because we're still building that list. It will run from 3:00 PM on Saturday to 9:00 PM, starting out with speakers of different topics, entertainment, and then it will be a sort of a party for the youth right there in the gym. We're having this in the gymnasium. I think it's going to be a great event. We're kind of thinking outside the box for our fundraising efforts to where we can also kill two birds with one stone and reach our community and our youth and things of that nature. So I will leave these flyers with the board, and you can pass them out, and I'll, we'll be passing out flyers via email and also door hangers for own cars and things of that nature in our parking lots. So we want everybody to be aware, and then also come out and support our men's basketball program as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the board?
Good morning, trustees of the Kansas City Kansas Community College. My name is Murray Anderson, and the name of my company is Tailor Made Visions. And my purpose of coming before you this morning is to actually request an opportunity to come before you again. We've been working with the workforce development arm of the Kansas City Kansas Community College as well as the Center for Entrepreneurship. And with that said, what we're trying to accomplish is to provide the ways and means in order for the Kansas City Kansas Community College to in fact expand its Center for Entrepreneurship campus to downtown Kansas City, Kansas, in the 66101 zip code. Some of the, well, the director of the Center for Entrepreneurship has been engaged in working with an initiative that I also work with and have been working with for approximately the last two years, that's called and referred to as the Econ Avenue, which is the green light for economic empowerment of the Federal Reserve Bank of Kansas City. It is a very important strategic economic development and community development initiative that is the model for growing your own business in the underserved markets. So the, my purpose here is to share with you and to offer to the Kansas City Kansas Community College an opportunity to expand its footprint to downtown Kansas City, to be able to address the underserved communities' business needs and entrepreneurial needs to expand and grow businesses and create opportunities in the underserved market and in fact build wealth. With that said, we have put in front of Dr. Lindahl a lease agreement, and also we have and we are offering a contract to the Center for Entrepreneurship and the Workforce Development Arm, in that our company would in fact pay a fee for training services, workforce development services, based upon a strategic model that is in fact a self-employment initiative model that we didn't invent, it was created actually by the federal government through the Department of Labor. And with that said, I would appreciate an opportunity to be able to come back before the Board of Trustees. I will share with you and send to you the contract offer for both the lease and the contract that is really dealing with the workforce development requirements that we need to support our business model that the Center for Entrepreneurship can in fact provide. So it's not rocket science, and we're not trying to reinvent the wheel or anything like that, we're trying to leverage these tools and assets that we have in our community and create the synergy between the, actually, the most powerful financial institution in the world, which is the Federal Reserve system. And if your support would provide us with the ability to do exactly that, and also move in our relationship with, hopefully, the state of Kansas, be, have the capacity to move those who are on public assistance to self-sufficiency through the self-employment initiative and business model. And thank you for this opportunity.
Any of your trustees have any questions of Mr. Anderson?
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, might just, if Mr. Anderson's working with Dr. Lindahl and staff, then, you know, I'm sure at some point in time they'll bring a analysis or assessment or review or whatever to us. Is that your anticipation?
Yeah.
All right, good.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello.
Hi.
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for being here, hearing me out. My name is Tyler Rowe, and I serve as the student body vice president for KCKCC. Na'Shawn Thomas, our president is, offers his apologies for not being able to be here, he is ill. I wanted to inform you of a few upcoming events. Our next student senate meeting is on April 22nd. The students have requested and continue to request your presence if you're able to allocate the time, we would appreciate it. We've had two members come to our last meeting, so I would like to extend a thank you to trustee Ash and trustee Maddox. I really appreciate it, as well as the rest of the senate. Our poetry slam is taking place on April 24th. Auditions for that, as far as the student body, are taking place, I believe, this week. We're excited, we hope it'll be an artistic and an educational process. Elections for our student body are coming, other student senate body are coming up, and they'll be on April 21st and 22nd. Very excited for the new nominees, to have a new voice on the student body. And the last thing that I've been asked to address is May 1st will serve as our end-of-the-year bash, and we have a lot of ideas planned, we have a lot of events and processes that we're very excited about. So, I mean, I don't have a very long spiel, but that's what I wanted to inform you all of, and thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you for coming this morning.
It was a pleasure to be there and to share with the, you know, the audience that day. Everyone was very gracious and attentive, and I think Wendell and I both enjoyed it.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board this morning? All right, we'll move along to communications. Darren Elliott, is Darren here? No. Hi. Good morning, Darren.
Good morning, thank you for having us here today. I've got members of our team, and got some of our trophies from the past few weeks, and want to talk to you about all of those things. Before the meeting, I talked to Peggy, and instead of just leaving these over here, we thought it would be a good idea, I'm going to have them bring a trophy and set it in front of each of you, and then when I'm done talking, if the debaters can get behind you and we can get a picture. So go ahead and take these up and line them up there, and I'll talk about what we've done the last couple of weeks. So, wheel up there. We've had a number of national tournaments in the last few weeks that we've attended, and so they're going to bring some of the trophies and set them there in front of you, and just everybody pick up one and, Anthony, put that one in front of the president. We should have practiced this, I think, maybe. Okay, so I want to talk first about the National Parliamentary Debate Association National Tournament, which we held here on our campus the middle part of March. The NPDA National Tournament had 53 schools and about 150 teams on our campus from all over the country. We were one of six community colleges that were in attendance at that tournament, the rest were all four-year schools, so about 47 four-year universities were here on campus. That tournament was here for a three-day period, and at the end of that tournament, the big trophy with the silver cup on top of it is the national championship trophy that's in front of Dr. Givens. And our team of Matt and Anthony won that national tournament. A couple of things that are impressive about that, the first is that we were the first team of, or the first community college team to ever get a team past the Sweet 16, and so certainly the first to win the national championship. The team that they defeated in finals, which actually occurred right here in this room and was broadcast live-streamed, is on the website. The team that they beat was from Southern Illinois University. One of those debaters had won this national tournament as a sophomore and as a junior, and were kind of the odds-on favorite coming into the tournament to win. The coach of that team is a good friend of mine, who also happens to be a graduate of Washington High School right here in Wyandotte County. So to have both of our teams in the finals was kind of special for us, but it was really exciting that they were able to win this national championship. As the tournament began, I remember the national committee came in, and one of our IT folks asked me, he said, "Is it going to look bad if you win the tournament when you host it?" And I said, "Well, you know, there's a long ways to the national championship," and it wasn't even on my mind at that point, it was just hosting the tournament and hoping our teams were successful. And it was only the second time that the host actually won the tournament, Texas Tech won, I believe in 2009, when they hosted. So it was great to have it here and to be able to host it. One of the other trophies that's up here in front of trustee Townsend, I believe, is the, that we were the top community college, and that's based upon how all of your teams do throughout the course of the tournament. We only had two teams in the tournament, and a number of the community colleges had three or four, and so our two teams amassed more wins and won the community college championship at that tournament. Before I talk about the next tournament, there are some people that I would certainly like to thank. The tournament, as big as it was, would not be a success without all of the help of the campus and everyone supporting us. On Saturday night, we had a debate, the US team has a debate against the Irish team, and they were out at the hotel, the airport Marriott. Dr. Givens, Dr. Lindahl came and attended that event, they both got a standing ovation in fact for being there and being supportive. Everybody on campus that pitched in, our dean, of course, Dr. Walker, for all of her support, Mr. Winn came and watched some of the debates and was a fan of some of the people he got to hang out with and talk to, and he even watched our semifinal debate. And it was interesting that he went back to his office and he sent me an email about what he thought of the debate and why he thought we would win the debate on a five-to-two decision, there were seven judges. And then when the decision came in, we had won the debate, and it was a five-to-two decision for us, so decided that if I want to maybe stay home, I'll just send Mr. Winn on tournaments for me, and he can do some coaching. Our IT folks did an amazing job. Everybody from everywhere in the country talked about how amazing it was here with the internet. There was another national tournament right after ours, where the first round of the tournament was delayed by an hour because the internet went down and people couldn't get online. And folks were calling me or texting me saying, "Can you bring your IT people over to this campus, because we'd like to get the internet working." Of course, our buildings and grounds folks, and then media services, for all they did, they videotaped a lot of the debates. I told them that the awards ceremony was scheduled to start at 7:00, it started at about 10:30. They stayed here through that and videotaped all of that, and so a big thank you to everybody that made that tournament happen, I think they all deserve a big round of applause. It's nice when you leave, when people are leaving your campus, they ask you to host again, and people have asked, "When are you going to host nationals again?" And I said, "I'm going to sleep for about a year, and then I'll think about it." The next tournament we attended was the CEDA National Tournament of Wichita State, it was the weekend right after that. This is the 10th time in 12 years that we won the community college national title in the CEDA organization, and that's in front of trustee Maddox. And then we also had the team of, so Matt switched partners for that tournament and debated with Nicole, and Matt and Nicole had an amazing tournament. The CEDA National Tournament had 130 teams competing. Were the only community college to have a team advance to the elimination rounds, and the top 64 teams advance, the top 64 teams advance, and they made it to the final four, which was the farthest a community college team had ever advanced at the CEDA National Tournament. Matt and Nicole also were both named CEDA All-Americans. Only 30 students in the entire country received that award, and they both received an All-American award. And then finally, the organization presented a posthumous Alumni of the Year award to one of our alumni. You may remember earlier this year, we lost one of our alumni, Aaron Thomas, and the CEDA organization recognized him for not only his work with the folks that he's been working with in Debate Kansas City, which is the Urban Debate League, but the help he had done coaching at both Lincoln Prep High School and some of the coaching that he had been doing here right before he passed away. And so they presented that award to him, which was nice, and I actually have it here, and I'm going to have his mom out sometime to present it to her, and so she was very touched by that. So the CEDA National Tournament was a great tournament for us as well. Right after the CEDA National Tournament, we had about a week off, and we went to the University of Iowa for the NDT. This is the national debate tournament that is kind of like the equivalent of the NCAA basketball tournament, you have to qualify to it. 76 teams in the country get invited through a qualification process or through an invitation process for the 16 teams. Were the first community college to qualify to that tournament four years in a row in the history of that tournament dating all the way back to the 1940s. We were the first community college to ever get two teams to the national debate tournament in the same year. So in addition to Matt and Nicole, Anthony and Brian, who couldn't be here today, got in. You may remember in March, I said they were the first alternate team. Two nights before the tournament started, I got a phone call from the director, said we had a team that had to pull out, is your team wanting to come? Can you call them and let me know? And I said, "Well, I don't even need to call them, I can tell you that they will be there." They had still been working, and so we did call them that night, and then I found out later after I called them at 10 o'clock, they had a practice round at about midnight that night to get ready to go. So we had two teams that were qualified to the NDT, and Matt and Nicole made it to elimination rounds of that tournament as well, made it to the top 32, and were the first community college team to make it to elimination rounds of that tournament since the early 1980s. So that was a great, that was great for them. See that, I have a note here. Ah ha, thank you. So I mentioned that we were at the CEDA National Tournament prior to the NDT, and that's the Cross-Examination Debate Association. So there are two different organizations, the policy debate and then the parliamentary debate. And so parliamentary debate is what the national, the NPDA is, and that's what I talked about first. And so at the NDT, they made it to elimination rounds, and so that was a great accomplishment for them. I can tell you that this has been by far the most successful year for the program in the 13 years that I've been here. The last four weeks, with the amount of teams we've had, make it to late elimination rounds at national tournaments that no other community college has ever come close to doing, and to do that all in one year says a lot about these students. Finally, at about 4:00 AM Monday morning, we returned from Cleveland, where we competed at the Community College National Tournament, Fire Pie. And at that tournament, that is just community colleges, there were 58 community colleges in attendance from all over the country, and we had a number of awards. The first is, this marks the 12th year in a row that we've won a debate division at that tournament. So all 12 years that we've been going to that national tournament, we've won one of the debate divisions. And Anthony took third in Lincoln Douglas Debate, which is a one-on-one format person of debate. And then Nicole and John both took first at the national tournament in the Lincoln Douglas Debate. So they were the, they've continued our streak of 12 years of winning that in a row. We also, John also received one of the student fellowship awards. There are about 400 students competing at that tournament, and the tournament recognizes eight of them as representing the best there is in terms of quality of performance, but also in quality of character, and present fellowship awards to eight different students, and so John received one of those, which was great. Alex received an award of merit for helping out at that tournament and helping run the tournament. And then Liz competed at that tournament, and Tyler competed at that, everybody up here competed at that tournament except Alex helped with the tournament administration. And then Tyler and John competed at the AFA National Tournament, which is the American Forensics Association, where they competed in individual events and duo interpretation of literature. And again, we were the, this is the first time in four years we've had people compete at the AFA National Tournament in forensics. So we've had a very successful run in the last four weeks. It's been exciting to win the community college national title in both NPDA and CEDA and Fire Pie, and then win the national championship among NPDA is something that is unheard of. That trophy has the names of all the schools that have won it in the past, and we'll add our name to it. And you'll see, it's an impressive list of four-year universities, and we were excited to get through that entire field and take them all down this year. So appreciate you giving us time today, but I would like, since you have the trophies there in front of you, if they could come up behind you and we could get a picture taken. And then if Mr. Winn and Dr. Vitale and Dr. Lindahl could come in behind too, and Dr. Walker, if you would join us, and I'll have someone take our picture. So, thank you. Go ahead and line up behind them, and we'll do our picture.
Congratulations to the new national debate champions.
Kansas City, Kansas Community College.
The first community college to win the NPDA title.
Come be a champion with us.
Enroll and start making your life better today.
So while they're...
Did you guys get to see the, did you see the commercial?
I'm not sure if they got to see it.
Congratulations to the new national debate champions.
Kansas City, Kansas Community College.
The first community college to win the NPDA title.
Come be a champion with us.
Enroll and start making your life better today.
And then, thank you again. Finally, I'll mention, I've talked to Dr. Lindahl, and at some point, we're going to do a, in the next couple of weeks, work on doing a reception for the team. And I wanted to do that, not only to congratulate them, but also to thank all the folks on campus that helped support hosting that national tournament. And so as soon as we have a date set for that, we'll make sure you all get the invitation to that, so you can come if you'd like to, and congratulate them, but also the people on campus, like I said, because it was without all of that help, hosting that tournament would have been impossible. So again, thank you to all of them, and thank you for all of your support and appreciate the time today.
Well, thank you for your work with this, with this program. Darren, you continue to impress us, and we're extremely proud of you, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thanks.
Okay.
Good morning, Board of Trustees, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bernadette Vallejos, and I am the secretary, or sorry, the treasurer of the Ralph Bunch Society. We would like to congratulate the debate team for all of their achievements and for putting us on the map as Kansas City, Kansas Community College. We were privileged enough to get the opportunity to go to the Model UN in the later part of March, and we have prepared a presentation of our experience of the Model UN. We began our journey to the Model UN. After much preparation, we were finally on our way to our big event. New York or bust? Model UN, here we come. We have arrived, eager to begin our delegations. We began caucusing our positions. We were not permitted to take pictures while in delegation, however, we managed to get a few for our memories. Time to put our hard work to use. With over 5,000 students from all over the globe, we all came together for a final resolution on some of the top crises going on today around the world. The Model UN, we were ready for you. Anywho, this year's model, New York model, was really challenging as you get to meet students from different universities abroad with very strong opinions on different global issues. Still, one has to find ways to caucus. I successfully, I succeeded to rally students representing 23 African nations, and we wrote a solid report with recommendations on how the UN can strengthen its regional arrangements in Africa. Our report was voted by absolute majority to be part of the 2015 Report for the Committee, Special Committee for Peacekeeping Operations. This is one of the biggest leadership roles I have ever filled. Thought-provoking experience myself. The experience was enriching. To see such a huge world packed in a small place with so many different people and cultures was really enlightening. Sometimes, it is easy to forget how really big the world is outside our small community. We did not come back empty-handed. KCKCC delegation received an Honorable Mention Award in recognition of our outstanding contributions. Seeing New York. For most of us, this was our first time in New York City. Flora. When I saw iconic monuments, the Brooklyn Bridge and the Statue of Liberty in New York City, I wept. I knew, I never knew I would have this opportunity. Cold rain or sun? Nothing could contain our excitement. We wanted to experience it all. Sharita. I choked up when I saw Ground Zero. These are a few pictures of our actual experience. Some were taken at the actual United Nations that we got to tour and visit. Life-affirming moments. Micah. Micah, who was flying for the first time, said, "My dreams came true, and it is life-changing. I cannot return to Kansas the same." Event was organized by Henry M. Lewis Center for Global Transitional Justice and sponsored by Ralph Bunch Society and Students for Global Peace. UN model, coach, and advisor, Dr. Inoki. Thank you, Dr. Inoki, and everyone involved, to make this possible for us. Sincerely, the Ralph Bunch and Global Peace Students. Hearts are the strongest when they beat in response to noble ideals. Ralph Bunch. We would just like to thank you guys and also share a little bit personally of our experience. It was definitely something that I don't think I would have been better prepared if it weren't for Dr. Inoki. He coached us from the very beginning. He taught us exactly what it was that we needed to expect, and I personally felt very prepared when I was there. It was definitely a moment that I will always remember for the rest of my life, and I thank you so much. I'm going to turn over the mic to my fellow people here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Micah McIntosh, and I am the Vice President for Ralph Bunch. Floris is the President. I'm the VP. And as an apartment, it was my very first time flying, and so I was kind of scared, but, you know, I went through it. And then it was my first time going to New York, and as a little girl, you always, you know, want to go places and say stuff out your mouth, like, "I want to go to New York, I want to do this." And I always, you know, told my parents, "I want to go to New York, you know, I want to go see, you know, everything they have." And never would I have thought that that dream was going to come true. But when dreams come true, you just think there for a moment. But I realized that that stuck with me forever. This trip, I mean, was amazing. And then we did stuff I thought we weren't going to be able to do, like see the Statue of Liberty, you know, get on the tour bus. And Dr. Inoki actually made that happen. So that was just a dream come true. And I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity and for, you know, sponsoring this guy and, you know, encouraging him, because the truth be told, Dr. Inoki, Dr. Inoki gets down a lot, but he always, he do, he gets down and say, you know, "I don't know what to do, you guys." But we always say, "Dr. Inoki, everything's going to be okay." You know, we, you know, we're here to encourage him, and he's just, he's just a good, amazing teacher. But the whole experience was just amazing. And not only that, you, you meet different people from, you know, across the world. Like, we met this one girl from France, and she was, you know, just like us. And we, you never really, you know, experience another culture until you get to talking them, you know, knowing their life story. But, I mean, as I can say, the trip was just amazing. And just, it was just incredible. But my dream came true, and that's all I can say. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
As they've reiterated enough, I'm the President of Ralph Bunch. I just wanted to briefly say that going on this trip, as a girl from Kansas City, a small town, I'd never think that I would be delegating with 5,000 students from Dubois, from France, from all these places. These children are children, young adults, they're so smart. And to just be coaxing with them and to ask me my ideas of what I thought of small regions in Africa and Russia and just places, it was, it was amazing. And to be able to be taken seriously in such an event. We didn't really get to explain to you guys exactly what the Model UN is, but it's just a mock conference of the United Nations, so. And that was not a, that was not a fib. I actually did cry as we were passing under the Brooklyn Bridge. And on his shoulders, I cried on his shoulders. I never thought that I would be experiencing all the things that I got to experience there. I'd also like to present to, as a gift, as an extension of our gift and appreciation for allowing us to do so, this is actually a gift from the United Nations and for the Chairman of the Board of Trustees, the President of the College, and the Dean of Social Sciences.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Flora.
Thank you.
Raise your hand, Jeremy.
My name is Ayong Witaso. I am the President of Global Peace. The UN, one intention of the UN model is to see how students from different cultures can disagree on several issues, but yet, at the end of the day, come to agree on very critical issues that affect the world. So in my, in my, in my committee, we're talking on how to strengthen regional arrangement between the United Nations and, and the UN, or between the UN and Africa. Those are very technical issues that some students had very strong opinions about, and some were not really willing to caucus, some were, they were just willing to pass out their ideas. They were strict on their ideas. But at the end of, on the first day, we deliberated for four hours, but we went nowhere, no agreement, nothing. But on the second day, many students came to understand the reason why we were there. And I want to say that I've attended two models, and those two models have had a huge impact, both in my career, I'm a pre-pharmacy major here at the college. They have had a huge impact, both in my career and also in my life goals. Last semester, I have applied, I applied in several colleges, and I had several offers to be called, to do pharmacy. One of the offers was from Massachusetts College of Pharmacy, and they sent me a letter after about three weeks that they are offering me a $10,000 scholarship annually because of my, because of my leadership roles that I've played back in school and in other aspects in the community. So I was very, I was very happy for the opportunity that I had to maybe participate in this Model UN. I shared my idea about global issues. Even though they gave me that scholarship, KU also offered me a better position. So I chose the offer from KU School of Pharmacy because I love Kansas and I want to remain in Kansas. So I'm very grateful to the college and to the Board of Trustees for putting us out there, for making us to experience what it's like, to know what, what happens in the world, to understand how things, because the moment you remain here in the college, you'll not understand that there are global issues. You'll not understand what other students know. You'll not know what maybe other students are thinking about crisis that affects the world. But the moment we go out there, I want to say it's life-changing. So I want to encourage us to continue with this UN model. This is my last semester in the college, and I'll be very excited to come to be back here maybe in five years, and I see that the Model UN, students are still participating in it. Students are still going out there and sharing out their views on what, on how global issues can be resolved. So I'm very grateful to the college, I'm very grateful to Dr. Inoki, I'm very grateful to the Board of Trustees for all that which they have done for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for coming this morning, and it was amazing hearing about your amazing experiences. Thank you very much. William Sixto, you're up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I went to Washington High School, and I was on the debate team. And I have two degrees from two different universities, and I can tell you that the time spent debating at Washington was the most formulative time for me, and I am just blown away. I am just absolutely blown away by the quality of what we just experienced. Amazing. Anyway, to kind of carry out that forward, we have, we are just now finishing up the commissioning aspects of our energy project, and we're finishing up the second round of internships. And so I wanted to present to you our two interns and let them briefly describe their experiences to you. Diego Hernandez and Colin Ford.
Hi, everybody. As he said, I'm Colin Ford. I'm a student here at KCKCC. In the fall, I plan to transfer to UMKC, where I'll be pursuing mechanical engineering.
Good morning to you all. My name is Diego Hernandez. I'm also a student here at KCKCC. I'm actually graduating and getting my associate's degree on drafting design, and I'm also planning attending UMKC in the fall for my architect degree.
All right. Well, first, we'd like to thank, stop and thank Don Kufakis and Katie Mathrop. Without them, we would not be here today. They are the ones that hired us on for this internship, so they are not here, but we'd still like to thank them. During one of the first weeks with Optera, we got to meet with Kevin Karst. He's a construction manager with Optera. He took us around the campus, showed us the boiler room in there with the new VFDs they put in. He opened up that water chiller there and showed us the fan inside. We got to go to the lower jewel down below us here and see the air handling unit, and then, of course, this school transferred from electricity over to natural gas, and that is one of the main gas meters there. He also took us up on the top of the fieldhouse. Terrific view from up there. I love heights. I don't know about you guys, but I was enjoying it. And we saw the new rooftop units that now, of course, run on natural gas instead of electricity. And I'm going to pass it over to Diego.
After that, we worked with the inside-house team at Optera called the Promise Keepers, because they were made up with... uh, cuz they were made up with Gary Reams, Aaron Targan, and Steve Schulte. During this part of the internship, we worked with the utilization program, just, uh, just basically monitors the, uh, the building of the customer, uh, making sure that they follow the agreements that Optera proposed to them and follow, and just to make sure they follow the rules that they were supposed to follow so they can keep their goals of what we're supposed to do. Uh, there were several areas during this internship, during this part of the internship, one was the gateway device, which basically was the most important part of the, um, section. Why? Because during the gateway device, it just basically, um, uh, transmitter between the, uh, the customer's building to Optera. With this gateway device, it let us communicate what was happening at the customer's building, letting them know they were following rules, that, uh, energies was being safe and things of the nature. And then another part was the monthly report, just basically showing Optera that the customers was following what Optera, Optera told them to do, uh, showing that they were saving money each month, they were saving, um, electricity and things like that. Uh, finally, we worked with the alarms, they're basically just inform us that, uh, there was any problems occurring in the customer's building and needed to be fixed and, or needed any, uh, inside assistance with any of our, um, mechanic engineers or any of our, um, any of our, uh, any, any, just any mechanic problems, that's just basically our alarms. And then here's, uh, the gateway device. Those, that, those right there are different kind of gateway devices that we, Optera uses with several customers and those are really important, that I'll kinda learn a lot of about it and that's it.
All right, yeah, and those keep getting smaller every year too, so that's really good. Uh, we got to get a marketing overview of Optera with, uh, Steve Spurgeon and Sue T. Garden. Um, Steve explained to me, this actually gave me a, a great overview of how the company actually goes about finding potential clients, uh, they use a site called Onvia and the client will put their, uh, project out on Onvia and then Steve will find it and if it's applicable for one of the branches of Optera around the country, he will then send it to one of them, those BDMs, depending on the region. Um, there were a lot of acronyms that I learned and I'm sure I have a lot more to learn as well, but, uh, those are the main four. BDM is Business Development Manager, I'm sure you guys have heard that one before. Um, RFP, Request for Proposal, RFQ, Request for Qualification, and SOQ down there.
Another section about this internship was modeling with Jerry Drew, who's a project engineer. When I heard modeling the first time, I was like, oh man, I'm excited for this since I'm graduating drafting design, I was thinking, hey, we could, we're gonna create something with our hands or any kind of design in the computer, but in reality was kinda completely different. During modeling, we used a program called Training System Analyzer that basically, um, let us do comparison between two, um, two fixtures saying, kinda like the boiler, uh, AC unit or things like that. Uh, an exercise we did was in Atlanta, Georgia, it was just an exercise, it was not a real project. We kinda saw how, um, how long would it take for a customer to get their money back and how much money they will be producing each year after they changed those fixtures. So modeling after, I got a hang of it, it was really interesting, not only because I learned how, how much money was involved during this project, but, uh, also a new, a new system that I learned how to use now. So modeling was really interesting after I learned it. And that's, uh, Jerry Drew, first guy on the Y and then, uh, who's a project engineer and Aaron Cox is the one in the back, they were both working really hard.
Yeah, I caught him off guard with that picture, it was pretty funny. Um, uh, we got to go over lighting with Brandon Wells, he's an energy analyst with Optera and Brandon's main job is to make sure that all the light fixtures that need to be replaced are replaced and to get a headcount of all of those, uh, as, as well as many other things that he does, but one of the tools is Google Earth and that helps him a lot because he gets to, you know, we can sit down in a cubicle anywhere in the world and view the project and actually zoom in, try and, you know, find these lights, what, what type are they, how many watts are they, all of that. Uh, Cree is one of the leading, um, distributors that we use at Optera and here's an overview.
All right, so during this internship, there was a lot of challenge personally for me. Why? Um, because I didn't knew nothing about energy services, nothing of, um, mechanic engineer. Unlike Colin, he gets a lot of, um, overhead mentality on this side of program. Uh, so yeah, basically, there was a lot of challenge. Uh, personally, I was not able to keep up with Colin and the staff members, I was always one step behind. When they were talking, I, I was like, what are they even saying? I did not understand a single thing that they were saying, but as time moves on, I was catching up with them, trying to keep up with them. So yeah, there was a lot of challenges during this internship and this internship is not only gonna help me to finish school, but I also to, um, have a real world experience because now I will have like a step, a step ahead of any other person of what people are expecting of me when I graduate, what type of work am I expected to do and most importantly, to be, uh, time management, uh, because time management, uh, taught me that I have to be always on time, I have to turn things on time, I can't be behind because if I, if I get behind on work, it's gonna mess me up and, and I just have to be on time, specifically. And I want to thank the Optera and you guys for giving us time to, to present to you guys and to the Optera because they gave us ti- time of their own to show us what kind of work they were doing during Optera, so I wanna thank all of you guys again.
Yeah, there were, uh, many challenges that we faced over the last eight weeks. Um, getting to come on campus here and see this whole system and how they put it in and all the lights and, and how the actual system works, um, everything that they had to replace, uh, and reintegrate and, and all that was, was really cool, um, and fun to learn about. Uh, there were a lot of tests that we had to go through, um, at Optera, any, anywhere from lighting to, um, lighting to, let's see, um, different types of, uh, equations for heating and, and all that kind of stuff, we, we had to learn all of that, uh, usually about two tests per week and we had, we were tested over that type of material, so it was fun, it was a great learning experience, um, it's definitely gonna help me in the future. I now have a great foundation of the business world and how, you know, it actually works in, in the field, you know, what you, what you're expected to do and, and, uh, I, I just had a great time. It was an amazing experience, so I'd like to thank Bill Sixto, along with the rest of the employees at Optera and I'd like to thank all of you for having us today, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make one other brief announcement, this is our second batch of, of interns and, uh, Optera has offered and he has accepted a full-time position, so Colin Ford will be working for us, um, as a full-time employee after, after his student days here at the community college and I think that's what, you know, the internships are, are a phenomenal tool and that simply articulates that wonderful meshing of, here I am as a student, here I am as a business, how does it mesh? We see opportunity, we see potential and that's ultimately what it's all about, so we are very pleased to announce that, uh, Colin has accepted a position with us full-time.
Wow, that's great.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, any questions? Yeah, my bad. Any questions from all of you?
I would have a question for Bill. This is our second group and we're really proud of who's been a part of this, I just wonder if, do you get any female applicants for these positions?
You know, uh, we didn't and, and, uh, we are a diverse group. And, and, uh, engineering is a wonderful field to pursue, uh, but we did not have any, uh, we worked extensively with Ed Kramer and, uh, we did not have any female applicants for, for the internship.
I just appreciate your work on this and your diversity and hopefully in the future we'll, we'll have a female applicant that'll come in and do well.
Sure, I will, I will tell you that there may be another opportunity, we, or we were asked by, uh, Cliff Smith to look at all the, the balance of the campus that we haven't touched previously, to see if there's a value proposition that we can move forward on. And so we're developing that and, and if that comes to pass and we work on that in the future, I think, I think that, uh, the idea of, of another group of interns, if that happens, would be a very, very positive thing.
Absolutely.
So, so I'm really proud of these guys, this was not a, uh, this wasn't dominance and copy, this was coming to work every day, a very professional environment and, and, uh, and putting them through their paces and so I'm very proud of them.
Well, we're proud of them all, just wanna thank you two guys for being such great representatives of our college and, uh, going through the program and being very successful, so just thanks for your, your good work on this, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Okay, I have the honor to read a resolution regarding the consumption of alcohol, liquor at the, uh, April 23rd Vocal Jazz Cabaret fundraiser and, uh, this is a resolution regarding consumption of alcoholic liquor in accordance with KSA 41-719, paragraph I. Whereas Kansas State annotated 417719, paragraph C prohibits the consumption of alcoholic liquor on public property except where expressly permitted by law and whereas the Kansas City Kansas Community College is authorized under Kansas law to exempt from the provisions of KSA 41719, paragraph C, specified property which is under the control of the KC KCC Board of Trustees and which is not used for classroom instructions now thereby, or therefore, uh, be resolved by the Board of KC KCC. Section 1, KC KCC hereby exempts for Thursday, April 23rd, 2015, from 6:00 to 8:15 PM, the upper level jewel from the requirements of KSA 41-7719, paragraph C. Section 2, this exemption is granted in connection with the holding of the 2015 Vocal Jazz Cabaret fundraiser for the KC KCC Music Club, passed and approved by the, uh, Board of KC KCC in a meeting held on April 14th, 2015. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, I might ask the trustees if the details of, of that resolution are, are correct and if, and if maybe there's ministerial area in that the, the event is actually the, the Hall of Fame at the tech center or am I, or am I incorrect? Or they're both of them, they're two? And so we need both of them? All right then, then Mr. Chairman, your attorney says that the matter is ready for your action.
Motion to approve resolution?
Move, move to approve.
The move and second to approve the resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. President has an announcement?
I received, uh, notice of resignation from the president/CEO of KBOR this week. Colleagues, I am writing to let you know that I informed the Kansas Board of Regents today of my intention to retire at the end of June 2015. It has been an incredible honor and privilege to have served in this role and to have known and worked with you. Thanks for your support and encouragement during my tenure at KBOR. I look forward to working with you during the remaining two and a half months. Thank you, Andy Tompkins, President/CEO, KBOR.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss non-elected personnel matters to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed for counsel, and for consultation on matters protected by attorney-client privileges. Uh, how much time do we need?
15 minutes, Mr. Chairman?
President's saying 30.
30 minutes, Mr. Chairman?
Up two, so moved. The move and second to go into executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're in executive session, let's take a five-minute break and meet in the boardroom.
And how many won the World Series?
Call the meeting back into session and move into the President's report and with that report, we're gonna see some, some videos.
Congratulations to the new national debate champions.
Kansas City Kansas Community College.
The first community college to win the NPBA title.
Come be a champion with us.
Enroll and start making your life better today.
This campus is so diverse, you can look around and find someone from every walk of life. I know I belong here, it's amazing.
Enroll at Kansas City Kansas Community College and start making your life better today.
Well, it's a great feeling to have high-quality education without worrying about cracking debts.
The college is really easy to get to, it only took me about five minutes to get here on the metro.
Thanks to the small class sizes, I felt like I always had access to the instructor.
They made my life better, they can make your life better too.
Kansas City Kansas Community College, the most progressive, forward-thinking, forward-looking, forward-moving entrepreneurial community college in the entire state of Kansas and beyond. Start making your life better today.
As you watch TV, you will see those on Channel 41, right?
38, this spot.
Is that a television station?
It's close, it's close to 41, but it's a little short.
Oh, we did the filming there, but Channel 38?
They're the same.
That's what I thought. Okay, don't confuse me. Okay, all right, but anyway, you'll see us on TV, those were three separate and we're gonna do more, but we began with those, so we're out there and I understand that we would just, did a filming just now for MTV, so we will be on MTV also.
That's music television.
I wanna know who, who's performing on that thing? Dr. Walker singing? What are we doing MTV? Dr. Lindahl, what, are you rapping or something?
Yeah, she's rapping, yeah.
But as you can see, we have been very busy in moving Kansas City Kansas Community College forward. In addition to our student success, uh, as you saw in our presentations today, we are fast approaching the end of the year and that's, that's hard to realize, I mean, we're talking about graduation and we're ordering caps and gowns and we're talking about when the different graduations are, I mean, we're talking about all of the end of, end of the year activities, so it's happening much faster than we thought. I'd invite all of you to take a look at the new fence that we have along the, I don't know, is that the front of the college?
West.
On the west side, if you look along there, all of that debris has been cleared away and we are, the fence is probably close to being, uh, finished. Uh, we are very excited about that, we partnered with the UG and with the KCK Police Department. Um, you have, you may have seen it on Facebook, it's up on Facebook, uh, you can check it out, there it is, oh, there are pictures, that's how it looked before and... No after yet, but that's before. Forget to after, okay. Our goal is to be omnipresent and to truly be moving forward, as we say all the time, we are forward-thinking, forward-moving, forward-acting and entrepreneurial and all of this is part of what we're trying to do, we wanna look like we are who we say we are, so we're looking at, at ways to clear, clean up the campus and improve our grounds and make them beautiful, so this is part of that process. Um, KC KCC will be present at the Community America Ballpark, you know where that is? It's the stadium, the ball, ball team stadium.
T-Bone Stadium.
Yes, we're gonna have a KC, you can tell how much I know about sports, we're gonna have, but I do know this, we're gonna have a KC KCC night at the ballpark and the day, the tails will be coming soon and somebody from the college will throw out the first ball. Okay, our team, uh, attended the annual Higher Learning Commission, uh, meeting and conference in Chicago, uh, two weeks ago and we learned, uh, s- some of the things that have caused us to come back and, and work a little harder and some details we've learned we need to tie up, but, uh, we are moving close to being fully prepared for the HLC visit that is in November. I know it's the first part of November, like the 14th, 12th? 19th?
Nine.
Nine?
10th, 11th.
Yeah, I knew it was before Thanksgiving cuz they asked me when did I want it and I knew it had to be before Thanksgiving because after Thanksgiving, uh, you know, we move on to the holidays and it's just, it would just be too much to put it out for too late. Um, Dr. Vitale, Dr. Mann, Dr. Lindahl and I attended the HL- Dr. Vitale, Dr. Mann, Dr. Lindahl, and I attended the HLC. For the Board, we're going to have your budget workshop. Peggy will be sending you some possible dates so we can go ahead and schedule that and get that budget workshop done. I'll be leaving for AACC Thursday in, where is it? San Antonio, Texas. That's it. So, I'll be gone until Wednesday of next week in San Antonio at the National American Association of Community Colleges. There are some dates that the Board needs to be aware, I've got them all here, I won't read them all, but they are available in your eBooks, the one that, huh? On your iPad. So, if you want to know what the dates are for all the events or if you'd like for me to send them to you over email, I'll be happy to do that too, when I send your, when I send your other information. And I think that's all. Thank you.
Need a motion to approve the President's report?
So moved.
Moved and seconded to approve the President's report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Dr. Vitale?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. As you hopefully are aware, there was an amendment to my report that was submitted yesterday and approved earlier by the Board and that is, in March, the Board approved a $30 technology fee on a per-student, per-semester basis. And would like to come back to the Board now and revisit that and ask that the Board rescind that technology fee and in instead approve a technology fee of $7 per credit hour.
I move that we rescind the action of the Board of Trustees of March 10, 2015.
Second? Okay, you heard the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move approval of changing our technology fee to $7 per credit hour.